Ken Spicer.
Here.
Dave Marcellati.
Here.
Frank Grubish, absent, he's training here. Jay Foskey.
Here.
And in a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Can we remove G1, so that I don't have anything?
Yep. Can I move to next month?
Yes.
Okay.
I have it all. I have them.
Anything else?
Pardon?
And I have a motion to approve the agenda unless there's some more changes. I have that cautious changes.
We approve the agenda. With the one change.
Okay. And a second?
I'll second that.
You're on my favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous. Do we have any, uh, we need to approve the minutes from last month's meeting? Have you had a chance to take a look at those and do you have any changes?
No, I don't.
You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
There's motions to approve, is a second?
Second.
I'll say aye.
I'll say aye.
Aye. K I. Yeah.
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve last month's new last month's minutes. Moving on to old business, uh, we're gonna, the update on Williams and Wood. Uh, last month, we agreed to hire Williams and Wood to do an overview. Um, you just handed me something. I'm waiting for a purchase order, so we're
That's a purchase order right there.
So is it signed and ready to go?
Signed and ready to go.
Contract too?
Pardon?
I gave you a contract that, that needs to be signed? I gave it to you last week?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I think I got it in there, didn't he sign it?
I don't know, I just got it. So tell me what you gave me.
I was waiting for Carter to sign it. Carter, Carter left it on my door.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll sign this.
Okay. So I'll get them going right away and they're delighted by doing the job and they're gonna take about six weeks to take a look at all of our ordinances and they'll draft an executive letter for us. Helping us understand where we have gaps, where they might, you know, need to be changed and, and
They have them already, like?
They don't have them yet.
Oh.
Now we
Is that something you're gonna get to them or?
Um, can you do that easier than I can?
Well.
I mean, I would know for sure that they're complete. I've got my zoning book.
Are those the ordinances that you're referring to?
Yeah, that mean our zoning, our zoning ordinances.
Zoning, okay.
Only zoning.
And then the master plan too, or just the zoning?
Just zoning, yeah, just zoning ordinances. Um, you can do that for me?
Do you know who?
Yes, um, Andrew.
Andrew.
Moore.
You might wanna sign underneath me since you're the, uh, department head. You'd sign your name there. That's, there's me finding.
I don't know that I need to, but I can.
If you don't need to, don't.
Yeah.
Don't sign.
Um, thank you. Okay, I'll let you know. Actually, we're all good to go here. So that would be great. I mean, just CC me. Um, when you do that, so I'm in the loop. And I'll, I'll drive, I'll, I'll drive it in the sense of he'll report to me, that kinda stuff. Okay. Thank you.
And I have them in my email, so.
Okay, great. Um, next thing is update on township parks and recreation. Um, last month, we started talking about, uh, goal five in our master plan and that the people in the township as one of our five major goals want us to take a look at recreation opportunities. So I put it out there on Facebook and at the meeting last month, so I had several people step forward and we had our first meeting. And the minutes are right here and I'll just paraphrase for you. We we, uh, took a look at the inventory of township properties and everyone at, at this first advisory meeting agreed that we should be developing the backyard here, the eleven acres, cause it's already cleared, whereas the other properties that we own are heavily forested. Here, we're ready to go. We took a look at the map or the, uh, drawing that was put together a couple of years ago for a grant application, just as a place to start. And that solicited a lot of conversation. People are very excited about, about the idea of developing this park. Uh, many, many ideas were generated, um, lot of ideas about having a, um, an actual facility at some point. Um, all agreed the baseball field was not a good use of space at this time. Um, none of this is set in stone. This is just the beginning of the process and I could still use two to four more people on the committee. So I'll post it again on Facebook tomorrow. Um, but we're off and running. We're meeting again next, next week. And the reason we're meeting every two weeks, um, is we wanna drive a five-year plan that we submit to the DNR for approval, which puts us in line to start writing grant applications. Uh, there are several grant applications that the DNR puts out. They all begin in April. And they're annual. So for some reason, we were to miss this next April, twenty twenty, uh, six, we would be available the following year, but we don't really want to. We actually would like to be in a position to write a small grant of some sort, uh, next spring. So are there any questions about that? Comments?
I have a random, what is the, like, the Facebook page?
Um, Columbia Township Planning Committee.
Sandwich.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, Columbia Township Planning Committee. Um, on the committee or myself, um, I represent the over sixty-five group. Um, then, um, a person named Kyle Brush, young thirty-seven-year-old dad, um, who also leads a youth group. Um, then we also have, uh, uh, Fiora. Um, wanna say her name right? Yeah, Fiora, um, who has a five-year-old son. She and Kyle are about the same age. And then we have Kimberly Robinson, who represents the forty-four to sixty-five age group. So we do have all generations covered. Um, but we can always use more voices, but I'm, I'm glad that at least with the four members we have working, we, we have multi-generational coverage, which is important.
I had a meeting with the manager of the, uh, February County Road Commission this past week.
Mm-hmm.
And we went out for a ride and when we went by this road right here, I told him I wanted to fill in the ditch and put in parking there.
Mm-hmm.
And he was positive about that.
Mm-hmm.
And I told him we wanted to tie into the Calhian Trail with the sidewalk on the other side of the parking.
Mm-hmm.
So
The perfect project for a grant, especially since he has his county resources.
They do Birmingham on the side of the road that's got all the dirt they need to put somewhere. So we're gonna try to get to Birmingham and then put it along that whole
Well, let's wait, get it all part of the plan. But yeah, I mean, that's even, your parking idea is part of the original plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, but yeah, I am, I think that's a perfect idea, um, which the county is very much beside, behind our other grant application because it did include that connection.
But we might get that done for hardly anything, be part of the
We might, yeah, we might. It might not be the first thing we do, but it, but yeah, um, yeah. Any thoughts down there, Jay? And okay. Um, then update on zoning enforcement and blight control. So that's also in your packet. You can see that there's a chart. Um, Tasha, I'm really just looking for guidance from you on since the spreadsheet's been designed, I haven't really heard from you. I know you've been really busy.
Yeah.
What, what's gonna work best for you? Uh, cause I, my job, my job is
Start it. I just haven't had time to do.
Okay.
Do it yet.
Do you need help?
I need lots of help, yes.
Well, we wanna hear about that because the, yeah, so if we go to like the earliest complaint, it would be Mario's on that spreadsheet. And what we wanna
Okay, so I guess that, that would also be another question. So you kind of have, you have them in order of, of like
Kind of as they're coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
I started at one of them, went down the list.
Yeah.
It would be kind of in order.
Yeah.
Okay.
I
So I'll just, yes.
I don't know a better way to do it, but I'm open to suggestions.
That's a great, that's great. So when they come in, they kind of come to you, kind of put it in here and and then
And then I let, I let you, I let you in or Gary know or, yeah, if, I, yeah, so if, maybe Ken sometimes sends me stuff, Gary's been sending me some stuff. Uh, other people have complained, so I get it. And then, um,
Then you update it and then you send it.
I do.
Okay.
And, but here's what's happening. So Gary's getting out, like, there's several things, two things came in today.
Okay.
Where, uh, one is a new property, one is a follow-up on a property. Gary went out there and said he contacted you and sent me pics, but I'm in the dark as to what happens next. That's, that's what
Me recently.
That's what he said. This is where I wanna
Okay.
I wanna figure out what, how do we fix?
Okay, so did he send you an email?
He did.
Okay, so maybe if he copied me on the email on you, then
You've had nothing from Gary in the last couple of days.
Unless he sent it, I haven't been on the Columbia Township website or my email on that, so maybe he sent it there.
Do you think it would be a good idea if you and me and Gary and Ken met again one more time to kind of talk about this piece? That once we have a complaint, what is the process exactly? Are there forms? That need to go out?
There's a complaint, there's a complaint form, right?
Do you need help completing those? I mean, are there things we can do to help?
Fill out the complaint form, the person complaining fills it out.
Well, these are, well, I, I think, Ken, are you open to having, actually setting a meeting? Could you do that?
Yeah, we do. I mean, we could have a meeting.
I don't wanna have these
We, I think, I think we have complaint forms for, for everything.
I haven't seen, if the complaint form doesn't tell me what Gary's gonna do and what Tasha's options are. Do you have options? Do you have some specific options?
You should know the letter, right? You give me a notice.
Is it a form letter?
Would, we could have our, 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 who set that up for you and put the name in there and give you a package to look at and
I know.
Would that help?
So when someone sent in a complaint, I thought it was going to either you or Ruth, and then you were putting this packet together and then sending it to me, like?
Well, that's kind of just told not to do that no more. Ah. So now it's going to
I think we need to have a meeting about this. I, I, I think what we need
Taking the initial complaint, doing an onsite inspection and taking photos.
Different, yeah, yeah, we need to, we
Then sending that up.
There are a number of ways the complaints come in, as you know. There's not just one, there's several.
Right.
Um, I keep the spreadsheet, so I ultimately should get a copy of every complaint that comes in. What Ken is talking about is we asked him to stop driving around and driving issues, like coming up with twenty
I just meant if someone sent in a complaint, go there.
If an individual resident sends in a complaint, I should get that immediately.
Good.
Um, whether it comes to Ken or whether it goes to Ruth.
Or Ruth, correct.
Uh, or anybody for that matter.
Mm-hmm.
Then it comes in, in
And then you put it in the
I do.
Yeah.
I do, um, and
I thought that then, yes, then Gary was boots on the ground.
Boots on the ground and that's happening, but then
And then I don't know what's done, correct?
And you're not looking at it. And also, I would like to know that when you do look at it, um, there's, I'm guessing there's one, two, three choices on how to respond in terms of a legal response, something that
So initially, let's say, um, well, mine zoning stuff, so campers right now are pretty hot. You're staying in a camper and you're not supposed to. There's a typical form letter that I said
We have several of those in there. Did they go out?
I haven't sent out any letter. I haven't done any, so that's
Okay, so that's
Just haven't got to it, to do it yet. I know how to do it. It's, but this is very helpful knowing that things are in order.
So we have money in our budget for blight and, and so I don't wanna have another one. Well, a lot of these things are blight and, and this is why
We, we have money for enforcement.
I'm only doing zoning ordinance.
Well, I think you're getting some, some issues that are blight and combined. And this is where I don't like what we're hearing.
I think your sheet has everything on it, so I pick out what's mine and I would do what's mine.
Yeah, all right. Again, we're not communicating very well. Let's have a meeting, okay? The four of us. Um, at your, at your earliest convenience, Gary too, and let's fix this piece of it. Once we get something in on the spreadsheet, the clock is ticking. Where do you need help? Nobody wants you to, you know, you've got a lot going on. I, so I, I want you to hear me on that. I asked you last week in an email, if you could think about this. And all, you know, we're, we can help you. We just need to know. I feel like I've heard a lot of, it's with Tasha, but you're saying
I don't do any blight.
So I think we need to have another meeting as quickly as possible
Dangerous.
And finalize the process. So we're still talking circles.
You got the dangerous buildings?
I know you've sent me some of those.
Yeah.
And I have some
I got a lot more too.
Uh, possibly building without permits, I would do those, campers.
We're not asking you to go to, like, go looking
Have you got a date that's best for you to do this? I know, I know the last week of the month, right? You have nothing scheduled? Or do you like doing it after South Haven, being in South Haven?
I have a very busy September. I have a daughter getting surgery and I'm out of town, uh, for a number of days at the end of September, so the sooner the better for me.
Just to clarify that quickly, uh, as far as complaint, uh, forms go.
Yeah.
You only have one. It's generally like for everything.
Correct.
So maybe there's a way to uh, make different forms for different situations.
We can look at that next planning commission maybe, cause we could probably control that here.
And lately residents have just been getting, sending me emails or they send them to Ken and they'll just say, they'll
Normally
At the corner of this and that, no way. So then I send it back, like, well, could you give me an address? Cause I think if we get an address, a complaint from a resident, they can at least give us the address.
Or I think something on the website would be helpful about complaints. If you have a complaint, here's the form, send the complaint to the secretary and then the secretary, we can, you know, give her a sheet of you know, email this complaint to these three people and then the
We have to figure out who's gonna do that. Yeah, yeah, we, I, yeah.
I think we do have a complaint.
They should all be going to one person to start with and that person should be on the website. And I don't think none of that's on the website.
None of that's done. And before we even get to that, what, once we get a complaint and now we have twenty-two, how are we following up?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, did you give him meeting dates?
I was kind of waiting for you.
If you can put this meeting in before September twentieth, I'd be grateful. Um, and I'll just, I, I'll be there, take notes. And I think that helps just to sort of have someone taking notes and then spit it right back so that we all are on the same page.
Let's see, so I don't have a meeting on Monday, the fifteenth. Tuesday, Wednesday, I have meetings. I don't have a meeting on Thursday.
Eighteenth?
On the eighteenth.
That would work for me.
I leave South Haven at four o'clock.
Okay.
How long it takes me to get from South Haven here?
Like twenty minutes.
Four thirty-ish?
Four thirty.
Shouldn't
September eighteenth, four thirty.
Works for me.
I'll, uh, notify everybody.
Okay, thanks. I think that will help.
We're not gonna have a courtroom there, so that
Shouldn't be a problem.
We don't, yeah, we're just gonna eat.
Just like we did last time. Okay. All right, thank you. Hang on a minute. Okay. Um, discuss, uh, that, that takes care of old business, new business. Um, did, did you get your comment in?
Uh, I did, just, I wanna clarify, maybe say one more thing. That was a great idea, um, what Tasha said about doing a complaint on the website. And you can make it even easier because you can have a menu to pick the topic of your complaint and then it's gonna say automatically email to the right person, so it is of somebody in the office, you know, directing the emails back and forth.
Do we have anybody that has those skills to do that on our website?
I need that. I can have the form.
Yeah. Better.
Pardon?
So the website currently doesn't have anything that you could fill out to have that sent to
Mm-hmm.
someone. I just might have the form online. Have the form, say who to send it to.
How to initiate a complaint?
Online, but I'll have to look again. I know at one time we had it on there. I don't know if we changed that or not.
Okay.
But we could clean it up better and
So we're not done. We're not done talking about that.
Make a list with one of these three items that is
We all, we all want the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, okay, anything else? All right. So the last, uh, the last thing we have on our agenda tonight is for new business is, um, Supervisor Spicer asked asked me if the planning commission could take up the topic of containers on property. So I did a little bit of research for the guys and I sent it to you. What do other townships do, you know, according to ChatGPT, on, um, regulating containers? And, um, you all have that, right? You've got a chance to take a look at it? So do you wanna talk about that a little bit?
So I have two townships, um, Clyde Township, they do not allow shipping containers and that's been in their ordinance for a long time, or like semi-trailers.
Mm-hmm.
You can't use those for storage. I have another township that doesn't allow them in like the dense residential districts, but you could have them like in the ag district. So there are people who do regulate them.
My research, just to sort of provide it to, to the two of you was, uh, the question was, um, are truck containers without wheels considered blight on property? That's the question that I asked ChatGPT. They said, good question. Depends on whether your local township allows them or not. And then and then blight is, you know, of course defined by, uh, ordinance and it certainly could be a deteriorated, um, or unsafe container that's just sitting on the property. Um, and, and townships do, do regulate them that way. Um, also townships, um, some townships treat them as accessory structures, which allow you to get a permit to put the container on a foundation because you have some specific use for it with setback requirements like there would be for any accessory building. So that's another choice. Typically in Michigan, some townships and cities explicitly prohibit shipping containers as accessory buildings unless approved by the planning commission. Others allow them to screen from view, maintain the good, in good condition or used temporarily. But if it's deteriorated, rusting, or open for junk, it's considered blight. So that's what the research says. What do you, what do you all think?
Uh, one more thing to add. So the building code has finally recognized, um, shipping containers. So before, there wasn't really a way to permit them because you'd have to submit like engineering and all of these things. They now recognize them in the building code.
Uh-huh.
So they have like, uh, most everything, there's a tag or a sticker or something.
Mm-hmm.
So it's then, um, recognized as an already approved structure under a different code.
Mm-hmm.
So you would be able to use it as is. You could get a building permit easier because the building code recognizes it.
As a, as an accessory structure.
As a, correct.
If it's on a foundation?
So that would be depending on the size. So it's still an accessory building or accessory structure. So that starts at six hundred square feet. So over six hundred, they would need a foundation.
Okay.
But your ordinance could require a foundation if you wanted to or some sort of slab or some sort of something for the under.
Well, what are you seeing out there? What, 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 how are people wanting to use these?
Um, storage, a lot of storage. Um, I think you can get them relatively cheaper than buying or building of something, so but if they bring them in and then there they are, but they can never move them or, you know, it's, it's
Has anybody tried to live in them?
Yeah, people turning them into tiny houses and stuff.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
It actually works.
Mm-hmm.
But they would that would be permitted. They would need a permit for that.
Mm-hmm.
So if you wanted it to be a dwelling, you could, you would need engineering, but
Well, even if it's under six, uh, seven hundred square feet.
Well, you wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to.
Wouldn't be biggie, cause we have a minimum of
Put one on top of the other.
Yeah, you could stack them or
So you would have to have enough containers to meet the minimum dwelling zone.
Yeah.
You could do an L shape or
Yeah.
Back to back or, yeah. Okay.
Right now, does our zoning ordinance allow them?
A shipping container?
Yeah.
It does not prohibit them.
Doesn't say anything, does it?
It doesn't say anything. I was kind of reading, I was trying, I was reading the definitions real quick. My next was structure. So that's kind of what I was coming through work, well, but structure is anything except ability, constructed or, that's more like a fence, I guess. So feel like being dwelling, but if you don't, you should building.
So they make short ones that are eight by twenty? Are they twenty?
They have eight by twenty, eight by forty.
That'd be a hundred and sixty square feet, so that would hundred and sixty square feet does not need a permit for.
Right.
Hundred and sixty square feet.
I mean So if you can find an eight by twenty, you would not need a permit, correct? It would have to meet the setback requirements because it's still a structure under ordinance. And then the eight by forty, that would need a permit.
Does that add up to the total square footage that you have for accessory buildings though?
Mm-hmm, that would be added. I would add it, you know, cause it's an accessory building.
That would prevent somebody from being installed, correct? That's, you already got that.
Correct, yeah, so um, so the definition of building is anything which is constructed or erected, including a mobile home, um, having a roof supported by a column support with other support, which is used for the purpose of housing or storing persons, animals, or personal properties. So per your definition of building, a shipping container would fit in it. So you're not outright prohibiting them. And then you just call everything an accessory building and that's what it would be. Cause you have a house and then this structure is accessible.
What's the limit for square footage of accessory buildings?
It's based on your property acreage. So if you have two or less acres, twelve hundred and eighty square feet. So all of your buildings on your property can exceed twelve hundred and eighty square feet. But would include a shed, a garage, a pool garden.
And then it goes up from there with a different order.
Yeah. You get to five acres that kind of taps out at, I think, thirty-five hundred square feet. I think one of the text amendment thoughts was to have that go higher. If you have more property, it would incrementally keep going up. Cause right now you're tapped at thirty-five hundred. So if you have eighty acres, you have to get a, a special use or a variance or something, so.
And, and what I wanna know is what's your experience, um, with people coming to you with their ideas?
With shipping containers?
Yes.
So a lot of people don't think they need a permit because they don't build it. So they're just there.
Mm-hmm.
That's the biggest thing. I'm not building anything, so I don't need a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
So
How are they, are, are they using them, um, more creatively? Like, is, I started, I
I don't, I, most of them are
Just to store stuff.
They, they aren't cutting indoors or windows or
They're not offices or
No.
You're not seeing that. They're not getting plumbing, electricity?
So you're saying they need a building permit to put one on their property?
Yes, they would if it's over two hundred square feet. Yes.
So eight by forty, then you
You would need a building permit, correct? Amazoning.
And they're probably not in, allowed in very dense areas either.
Well, in your ordinance, they're allowed anywhere.
They're, okay. Okay.
Semi-trailer would be the same thing then?
Um, if it was
Use for storage.
That is more commonly, commonly prohibited to use for storage than a shipping container. With the
Would be a vehicle, would not have
Cause you would have to take it off of the wheels and then take basically the box and put it on the ground. But those are constructed different than a shipping container. Cause the shipping containers are constructed to stack on top of each other, like way high, so they're stronger, whereas
A semi?
A semi isn't constructed to be storage.
I just assume they were the same, cause they often get, go on trains. I thought.
No, there didn't, no, no.
Big enough.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the construction
We have done a resident with about fifty of mine is property.
Oh, mine.
Fifty semi-trailers? Got them full still too.
So, yeah.
Wow.
So if it's over two hundred square feet, then it would have needed a building permit.
A lot of people use them, dangerous facilities.
Correct, so in Clyde Township, that they don't allow them, I have issued ag exempt permits for people to use them.
Mm-hmm.
With like lots of criteria. So they would still need an ag exempt permit. They're still required to meet the setbacks. But they, they would then be exempt from accounting as their accessory building number, as your ordinance doesn't count ag buildings as your square foot.
How do you guys feel about using, about a container being an accessory building?
So the only concern that I have is that you would really need to go around the township and put down everybody's address who has one, so that you had a base of who has one moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
So that, cause those people would be grandfathered if you now prohibited them, so they need ones. So that
But we're saying they didn't get
I'm not asking that. I wasn't asking about prohibition. I was asking what the commission members thought about having them as an accessory building. Yeah.
Correct, so if they're there
They're, 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 we want a permit, then we got a violation for not getting a permit.
Correct, a building permit would have been required, correct? If they're over two hundred square feet.
Do you wanna see violations for all those?
Can I, that's the question I've asked. Uh, what, what's your opinion on, on a container as an accessory building?
Um, I don't mind.
Okay. Why?
I think it's like, and the other, like an Amish building, you know, those on I think it's like any other, like an Amish building, you know, those Amish buildings. You can put those up and it seems okay. It's just another building to me.
Okay, how about you, Jay?
I, I would agree with that.
So, so I have a question. At this point, people can put. A pole barn on a vacant lot. On vacant land.
With a special use.
With a special.
If they own another piece of property in Columbia Township.
Anywhere in the province.
Currently, it's anywhere in the township, yes.
That revision was just made last year?
We have not revised any of that text yet.
It's always been that way.
Never, as township ordered it.
There's an ordinance in effect. If you want an accessory building on a vacant lot, you have to own a piece of property in Columbia Township.
Oh, gotcha.
With the dwelling.
Minimum square feet of seven hundred and twenty? For the accessory building? Any kind of, no, no, the, the accessory building.
The accessory building is tapped at twelve eighty.
Okay, is there a minimum?
No.
Okay, it can be. A little tiny container, it can be.
Correct.
I, I'm, I, I, how do you feel about Ken? Uh, the uh accessory building, like container as an accessory?
I don't. I think they need to be in the backyard if they're gonna be somewhere, not in the front yard. I think they have to have regulations with them, if you're gonna use them and. I don't think that they should be uh. Just set on the ground. I think they need to be properly installed and leveled and.
So you'd be open to having them be an accessory building if they had met certain?
I, I would be open if they're, like, like we have a restriction, so now it's gotta be in the backyard and. We have restrictions for uh barns being in the backyard, don't we? On the lakes, we do, right?
The lakes, those are different. On the lakes, the lake side and the street side are different. But if you're in the ag district, no, you can put it, it just has.
I think they should be in the back, behind the house at least.
Is such an informal meeting, do you have any input, either one of you?
Yeah, I think treating them as accessory buildings makes a lot of sense, especially since they're recognized in the building code. So being accessory building, they would need to have the foundation, they'd be left with setbacks. Really, a, a shipping container is no different than a shed that you would purchase if it was under a construction near your yard. The advantage is they are recycling material that would otherwise be discarded. So you don't really want to discourage shipping containers as a storage unit because they don't use a shipping container. They're gonna purchase a shed, which is new material, not recycled material. So. Regulate them the way you would a shed, you know, make sure that they're maintained virtually sound, setback appropriately. Less, it's no different than any other building, especially since the building code that recommends it. If anyone's using it as a dwelling unit. They're gonna have to modify the structure, which means that shipping container no longer meets the building code and needs. Need to make sure that's virtually sound. Got too many holes in the shipping container, it'll collapse. Put, put plumbing and H back in there, it's gonna mold. So, just like any other structure, you need an engineering. If you're gonna modify it from its original intended effect.
Okay, would you have anything? Okay, okay. Um, well, what would be a logical next step? I think there's general consensus across the board that. We should allow them as accessory buildings, but we want some regulation. Um, we don't want them sitting on people's. Parcels just sitting there rotting.
So they would have to then, if they're getting a building permit, they would have to ne- meet the building code requirement. So.
How do we do that with all the containers out there now? How do we?
Um, well, we could do a little education, maybe put a clip. In the newsletter, do you guys send a newsletter out with your taxes? Maybe we can put a.
Actually, probably I'll start getting thinking about that.
Give an article in the newsletter or maybe on the website that. You know, shipping containers are a new kind of thing and permits are required for them.
It's not new, permits would have been required all along. We don't, we, I'm, what I'm hearing is we don't really have to do anything. What, what I'm hearing, that you're not. We don't have to do anything with our current ordinances.
Correct, because they're, if they're over two hundred square feet, a building permit is already required. And they already have to meet the setback requirement.
So it's only more an, an education?
More of an education, that people know that they need a permit and. We're not always driving around, so we don't see them and I don't know. If they, how long that they have been there, so. So giving the current ones.
Let people kind of gradually actually fix things a little bit.
Because the, yeah, not even sure how or where you would start, so.
Right, right, maybe you could think about.
Yeah, it has fifty semi trailers, huh? I don't know.
Well, I see shipping, shipping containers, you could. Yeah.
So they're two different, they're different things.
Yes, went back on uh shipping containers, but I'm just thinking how many of those you could have.
Well, you could have as many as your square footage of accessory building.
Basically, or the three. Three thousand five hundred.
Two acres, you could have a twelve hundred and eighty square feet.
Yeah.
Several of them with you.
Four feet, six of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just seems like a lot of containers hidden there.
You now have stuff inside of them, they're not in their yard. If you're upscale, you're, you're recycling something. But I think.
Yeah, make great.
There is a. There is a thought that I didn't build it, so I don't need a building.
Right, right. So we need to correct, we need to educate people, we need to give them a chance to correct it. Uh, maybe a grace period of, 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 of source, just because it hasn't been necessarily clear.
Probably easy to get the building permit now, but they're recognized by the building code. Five years ago, they might not have been. So maybe some well-intentioned person attempted, failed, gave up.
I think we were kind of just issuing them, just. Because we just kind of know that, how they're constructed and, you know, what they're used for, but. Technically, engineering would have been required to get a permit.
If they take it apart or.
Yeah, they're like, yeah, they're getting to be more common, so.
Yeah, yeah, I, people, I, I, I mean, I remember, I, modular housing in general is getting. More popular and. It's not beyond my imagination that someone might have some pre, some creative ideas on what to do with these.
Yeah, so if they're already out there, there would have to be some sort of, how long has it been there? Do you think it meets the setback requirements? You know, you, you know, do you want to drive around the township and try to get them into compliance? I'm, I'm not really sure.
Right, and hope, right, right, okay.
How to answer or do some sort of.
More than put.
Driving around right now and get an idea of where they are and I, I'm not really sure how.
What do you guys think?
So can we retroactively make them put a foundation under it?
Yes. If it, if it did happen to be over six hundred square feet.
Where does the six hundred number come in?
The building code.
And we want to keep them painted and looking fine, like not rusting and.
About that, so.
I think there should be, so, I mean, I could people complain.
You're working on a tax amendment now. Should we add something in the tax amendment? Please discuss the shipping container, like adding them to the definition of a building or.
Sure, yeah, or even something in possibly the. The general provision or something, or, yes. I, I think.
Maybe that would be their best way to go.
What's that?
To, to actually.
We're gonna do a.
Wait a minute.
They actually added definition or call them out specifically in the ordinance. So that if someone is looking for it, they see, they see that in there. Oh, here's the word shipping container or container or whatever, then they see it in here and then.
Do you want to think about recommendation and, and suggested for us next month? Something that we can look at and maybe vote on?
Question three, you mentioned requiring the shipping container to be painted and maintained properly. Would you treat them the same as any other accessory dwelling unit in that a shed needs to be properly maintained and painted? And this shipping container, just like a shed, is. An accessory dwelling unit, or would you have requirements specific to shipping containers that don't apply to other?
I think we're gonna treat it as a accessory building.
So if you want to require a shipping container to be painted, you would require any accessory building.
To be painted, which do we? Do we have language about accessory buildings?
Very bare bones when it comes to any of that. I mean, the ordinance is really small, there's not much in here.
Well, this is where we're, we're in the middle of a zoning review, um, maybe this can even wait. I don't know, maybe we start a general education, we let the zoning review happen that Williams and.
I think we just add it to what she's working on. So include it whenever that that happens.
I'm only working on moving the setbacks into.
That's all she's doing.
Yeah, and then we add into that whenever that's ready.
If that's the right approach, yeah, I mean, because we're talking now about adding the word container. So it's clear that it's part of the accessory building, but now also. Potentially. Keeping it up. I mean, we are, you're saying our, our, just a minute.
I think that's.
You were talking about, our ordinance doesn't talk about. Accessory buildings having to be kept up in any particular way.
What are white ordinances?
Well, what does that say?
The property maintenance code does. The property maintenance code only dresses single family homes. The way.
So, so this piecemeal approach, I think is what gets us into trouble, so. I mean, we could, we could just start an education effort, effort based on what we have. And, and, and we are. Going to be updating our zoning ordinances in the months ahead, but we could begin an education effort that at least. Lets people know that they do need a permit.
I, I think the education thing is a done deal. I'll, I'll make sure that happens.
Sort of line or paragraph in the. You know, the.
We'll group it on the website and we'll get it in the newsletter. Let's see.
So what we, what we don't, what we want is, is, is at least two people looking at that. So that we agree on the language and all that before it just goes up on the woods, right? We want a process in place.
I'll send something to Tasha. Tasha likes it. Modify it, send it back to me and. You'll be C C, just remember that, C C.
C C, got that, okay. So, um, Ken's gonna do, let the minute show, he's gonna do a, um, some investigation on an education piece. And he's gonna s- send it to Tasha and to me for review.
So currently, our ordinance refers to maintenance. All dwelling structures shall be properly maintained against deterioration for the property maintenance ordinance. So the dwellings. For maintaining is under the property maintenance code. But it does not refer to accessory structures.
Well, we have a code out there for uh. The uh international.
Nope, we're talking two different things.
Yeah, I, I.
An accessory building that is damaged, windows are open, the roof's caving in, that would be the dangerous building code. Or the dangerous, yeah, the dangerous building code. The property maintenance code is more for hanging, stop it. Some more maintenance type of thing.
But not a residence, not an accessory building, correct?
It says a dwelling, a dwelling structure.
So that's.
Barn is not a dwelling structure.
So quickly add that.
And what I'm saying is I'm uncomfortable with this approach. It just doesn't seem. Right. Um, I, we are paying someone to take a look at our zoning ordinances as a whole and.
I think we're having a good discussion while we do our zoning ordinance, when we get to that section. That we possibly would like to have language that addresses maintaining.
It's a place marker, correct. I agree with that, but already in this conversation, we've identified about four or five different things. And where different person or ordinance is only. And, and I'm not comfortable doing a quick and dirty fix and putting it through a public process when we know full well. But we've got a professional approach that we're paying for.
So, yeah, when we get the professionals, we can give them a list of saying. We think it should have a foundation or a slab.
They're just gonna review our zoning ordinances, they.
Can we specifically ask them to address uh best practices on shipping containers?
And I like.
Adjust and recommend best practices.
Actually, I like, I'd like to see what we think about that, yes. I think we can say that, you know, as you look at our zoning ordinances. We're particularly interested in best practices. I kind of said that to them already. It's the twenty first century, what are best practices? What are other people doing in rural areas? What, um. But I think we can come up with a list of containers or whatever else we think we want to hear about by way of best practices.
So that's a whole nother thing. So their review is gonna check for. Um, if it's up to date with all of the laws, that all of the codes that are referenced are to date. Um, probably one of the things will be wind, solar, battery, energy, but they might say it's not in here, which we already know. So that's what their official review will, will say. And then after that, that, then there's another fee if you want them to then. Write the ordinance or.
Well, that's why I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna manage, Andrew, we've had a conversation. I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we can give them a quick list of things we're particularly interested in. Um, his advice on as he's looking at our ordinance, um, and.
Probably reformatting, definitely could use some reformatting. Um, I find it very difficult that the setbacks are not in the districts, that's, which I know we're.
But you're working on that now and, and what, when we had our conversation, he and I. That was, I, that's why I loved the conversation. We're very interested in how our ordinances need to be up to date. To meet twenty first century ways of living. So, um, I don't, I don't want to hear about the overlay district, you know, something that we already know. I, I think I, I'm pretty sure he's open to at least some guidance. So are there other topics besides containers? That we would like to have best practices on? Like, what, well, you know, why don't you think about that? Why don't, why don't we, I mean, I'm gonna get the guy going this week. So, what do you, what do you have?
Accessory buildings on vacant lots.
Accessory buildings on vacant lots, okay. Including containers, yeah.
I was being facetious.
And, um, Tasha, what? You said with regulating shipping containers, if they're over six hundred feet, they fall under the.
They would then be required to have an actual foundation under them.
Okay, so under six hundred feet, so if. If these small shipping containers are hundred and sixty. So basically someone could have three of them on their property and there's no. Are they covered?
Technically, they could just put them on the ground if they're under two hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Um, when they are over two hundred square feet, there's then some sort of anchoring or. I think you could put like con- or like gravel or. I think you technically could actually still put them on the ground. But I could find the answer to that specifically. Because then there's an, an anchoring, then you have to anchor it somehow. To the ground once you hit certain sizes, and on the six hundred square feet or over, you actually need a full, a pole foundation. Which is the forty two inch.
So if somebody bought, say, say they put two shipping containers or they put three, and they're under six hundred, they can just put them there. And then, uh, would they be allowed to put them like right up by the road?
No, they would still have to meet the setback requirements.
Is.
Even if they're under two hundred square feet, they will have to meet the setback requirements.
So they're still accessory buildings?
They're still accessory buildings.
They fall under setback, but not building permit? So then what if they added a fourth one and now they're over six hundred feet total?
Well, they would have to actually combine them together.
They would have. Like connect them?
They would have to connect them together to then be over six hundred square feet. If you have four of them not touching each other. And they're under two hundred square feet, then you, they're separate.
Oh. Is that like a loophole that we?
Yeah, it's the structure itself.
You're limited by.
So they would have to put them all to- together. They would have to weld out the walls and have it then be six hundred square feet. As one building.
Stack them.
Stack them.
But. You're still limited to the total square footage of all of your accessory buildings combined.
Oh, okay.
So your lot size limits you to the number of storage units. You can have.
Okay, I got you.
What would, how hard would it be for you to, um, we all, may I ask one question? Yeah, we have, we have, we all have our zoning.
Yes, I had a thought. Yes, I had a thought.
Folders, um, right? You have a set of the zoning ordinances. I, so do I. We all got them.
I think I gave mine to somebody.
Okay, well, I would like us all to, I was, I was hoping you could actually give us the provisions you would like us to look at. Um, and we should look at them before, because it's easier if we have those provisions in our head when we hear you talk.
So I actually had a thought. So I do have one township that limits the number. Of sheds under two hundred square feet. That could possibly be an option to limit it to two or three. That way you're not getting nine of them or something.
Yeah.
So that could be.
Could you tell us what the provision numbers are, the two or three different zoning provisions that you are referencing tonight in our conversation? So we can look at them ourselves and if these guys wanna look at them, they can too.
I don't know that I was referencing.
You talked about accessory buildings, you talked about.
Left, they're built.
It would help us.
Like the chart, you mean?
Well, all of the very, you you've mentioned two or three provisions that would need to be tweaked or changed. Um, and that that are currently in place.
I recommended anything be.
What provisions would would you like us to look at?
She was in definitions, wouldn't you thought?
I I am not recommending any where to ship containers. And we were just talking about, are they allowed or not allowed? So I was reading the definitions.
From where? They're just the definition in the front of the of the.
In the, correct.
The very beginning of the zoning code. I'm trying to get our, all the commission members to get comfortable with the zoning code.
So Article seven.
Article seven, thank you.
Are the definitions.
Okay.
I read accessory use of of structure. Um, then I read building.
Okay.
Then I read, um, there's one. That says construction.
Under definition still?
Yep.
So accessory bu- accessory use building and construction.
And I kind of read the garage vision to see if maybe that would. Put that. And then. Those would be the basic definitions.
And then you went into blight a little bit too.
So we were talking about. Um. Regulating the maintenance on. Accessory buildings.
Hmm.
And there's nothing in the ordinance that requires that they are maintained.
Just dwelling.
So in the ordinance, it is four ten.
Thank you. That's the blight ordinance, four ten?
Nope, it's the minimum dwelling. Four point one zero and then J. That refers to the property maintenance code.
Okay.
And that's the one that refers only to dwellings.
Okay, so if if. You guys can look at those, just get familiar with them. It helps us if we know what they say rather than just talking at us and it just. Would help us make better decisions if we became familiar with the language. And um and we've agreed.
Talked about the chart quite a bit about the size. We have the chart of the acreage and then how.
And what provision is that?
Um, that's actually all of the districts in the charts.
What we're, we're in the just, in the code, is it?
Section three.
Big, thank you, section three, okay.
Each district has an R O.
Yes, Article, yes. R one, R two, R O, and the two X.
Let's go over there differently.
Okay.
May I come in?
Okay, so for today and for tonight, we've just decided that the three of us are gonna work on an education outreach. And um I don't know if it'll get done before our next meeting. It might be, we'll look at it one more time. I'm not sure how complicated it's gonna get. Maybe it's not, I don't know. In my head right now, it is a little bit in terms of how we're gonna communicate to the public. But I think it's a good first. Step.
Uh, and we can put something on reminder too if we need to.
Are there any other comments on that?
I don't think of a fun headline like. Shipping containers are popular or I don't know, some some catch it line or I don't know. That's kind of what I was thinking about. Kind of start the phrase. Look here, look here.
Yeah, get your shipping container here and then.
We all.
Regulations for shipping containers.
Yeah, I'm something catchy.
So we also have the option, you said some places don't allow them at all.
Correct.
So I'm taking that. That we're not gonna go that way.
I don't know why we would.
Okay, I just wanted.
And does anybody else have a good reason as to why we would do that? This is the time.
Other than it was junky, but.
I I would think it would, you get into uh the higher rent districts on around the lakes and that is probably not a. A good thing for your property knowledge. But in the ag district, I don't.
Oh, well, I have one that doesn't allow them. And so let's say the R O district or the. The yellow around the lake, you could maybe not allow them in those districts because they're smaller lots and. But you can have it in ag. I I have one that doesn't allow them in their dense residential districts. But you can have them everywhere. So that's. If there's.
Do we have many in the dense residential districts? I I don't know. Does anybody know?
What's that?
Do we have, we have a lot of containers in the dense residential districts? Are you guys seeing around the lake?
I haven't seen any in the lake. The lots are too small, they barely fit the houses.
That's what I'm thinking, I, yeah, yeah.
But if you have a a house and a lot somewhere, you can put your shipping container on it.
You could, yes.
On that lot, yep.
Yep. As though it has to be next to your house, it has to be just somewhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
But someday, I'll change that ordinance. And I'm gonna get my way.
Is there anything specifically about people burying shipping containers? Cause I know of one instance of where that's been done.
Wow. That's some underground thing?
I know that people using them for swimming pools does become popular.
Oh my.
And they do not meet the code for to be used as a swimming pool, just by the way. I had one, someone did it and they didn't get a permit and the inspector made them take it out. But they have a special liner that you could put in it that then brings it into compliance.
For a pool?
For a pool, but what would they put it in the ground for?
I don't, I don't know.
Some underground bunker or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
Okay.
Whole world, yeah, root cellar. Seems a very appropriate use, honestly, yeah. I mean, the the whole.
Going north and south.
It'd be a really good place for it.
I get the roots, I get anyone now. Okay, all right, is there anything else? I think we 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 uh, we'll we'll probably take this up one more time next, next week or next month on the education piece. Um, I don't know if we'll get it out by next month, but maybe we will, we'll see. Okay.
So just. To throw that out there to make it keep it complicated, is there a thought of possibly regulating accessory buildings? To require them to be behind your house? That.
Not, not in my, I hadn't thought about it, yeah, I hadn't thought about it, especially on ag land.
Just as long as they meet the setbacks, you could have your pole barn or.
But I honestly, I gotta tell you, I'm generally uncomfortable just winging it. And I feel like that's what we're doing. I get this question that I. I I get, which is, let me finish. I I get a question and 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 we're thinking about it, but we're not thoughtful about it. And your experience about what's going on in other townships is helpful, but I'm looking for as broad experiences I can get. And I'm really hoping Williams and Works is gonna help us with that. I'm looking for a pretty good understanding of what best practices are. Not just what this township does and that, but really what are best practices? If we're gonna spend money to have this done, I kinda wanna know that we're getting. Our money's worth.
Hmm.
And I'm really uncomfortable with this pot shot approach. Um, I just, I, but I am very comfortable with issues being identified.
Correct, and that's, and if it's not an issue, then we would just move on.
Right.
If the majority of the, it's not an issue and you should be able to put your pole barn or garage wherever you would like, as long as you meet the setbacks, then.
So if we're gonna shortlist accessory use buildings, um, and um, containers for Williams and Works. That could be one of our questions. Now, what what are people doing? Um, what's best practices um for a town like ours? Are um for placement of these things? Do they ever go in the front yard? Do you limit it to ag only? I don't know.
It is less common to regulate them than to not regulate. I only have one township that doesn't allow them in the front.
But that doesn't mean it's best practices. It means we just haven't regulated it.
Correct, yeah, correct, I.
And that's what I'm interested in, yeah.
I am a. Realist and I think people should be able to use their property, obviously for what's allowed, but. If you can only put your garage in your front yard and it still needs a setback requirement. I think that that's just my.
In general.
Just my thought is, you know.
He, uh, people don't wa- move out here to be a sub- a suburb where everybody has a house that looks the same. Um, everybody's got their own little dream going on, but they want reasonable regulation, not overregulation.
Right, I I like that.
I like that too.
Yes.
I I do agree with that. Every, I mean, we all count on that. Reasonable regulation, not overregulation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm I'm not too sure that the. Having a pole barn in your front yard. Could be used for a lot of things that you probably wouldn't want in that community for having one in your front yard. Like a constant garage sale because it's right next to the road and. Then that garage sale is going on all the time and then it looks like it's a commercial business. And that's what it turned into. And then you got. But it's hard to stop that once it gets in and that's why it's just best to have them in the backyard. And there should be no problem putting them in the backyard or. You got the land to do.
What is the backyard is gonna be a a big.
Be in the dwelling.
Well.
I mean, if you want a garage, you're always making a.
I mean, my, my, my house is five hundred feet back from the yard. What do you care if I put uh an accessory building three hundred feet from the road? My house is five hundred.
You're in the ag district, right?
Well, you're not distinguishing in your comments about.
No, I I I think I've said the ag, uh, the ag district is kinda.
So you're making appointment.
I'm ma- I'm making it for residential.
For residential. You're narrowing it to that, okay, but so.
I'm more concerned about residential in this community than the ag, the ag is, you got farmers out there with. Barns all over, but.
Yeah, so I guess if we were gonna do something like that with residential and lake owners, I want more input from lake owners. Uh, 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 cause I don't really care.
To have more or different regulations.
Yeah.
Cause then you have to know who was already there because then it's a grandfather thing when it's in your zoning. So once you significantly change something, moving forward.
You gotta know everything is out there first.
Prepared for. You know, for kind of a little bit enforcement moving forward, so I'm. I'm all for just basic setbacks.
Okay, um, are there any more comments on this topic? Our last substantive topic for the night, let's just public comments. Is there any, we'll, we'll work on an education piece and um my guess is we'll bring it back to you guys one more time next month. Um. With questions, um, is my guess on the education piece. But if we can get it out, we will. I just don't see us working that fast. And even getting it up on the website, who does that? Who is that? Kara?
I just asked Kara to do it. I give her a piece of paper and she gets it done quite rapidly.
Okay. Okay. Um, any other questions? Uh, uh, we got your zoning report. Did you have any comments that you wanted to make on that? Do you have a report or anything for us tonight, Ken, from the board?
No.
Right?
Oh, um, I have not heard anything from the P U D people. I sent them that letter and I haven't received any emails or calls.
Okay.
Regarding it, so.
They did someone over there for engineering, uh, measuring again.
Oh.
Uh, once at the time of same day of the of the meeting and there we later after the meeting, they were measuring again. They're doing something different.
Hard to say, isn't it? How much time did they have to appeal if they wanna appeal? Sixty days, ninety days?
Thirty days.
It's like twenty five days or it's a very limited amount of time. Yeah, twenty five days.
So they had to do it by now.
Yeah. Any uh public comment? Yeah. And you know, it's pretty important tonight, yeah, yeah.
Hi, my name's Rob Mercer. I recently purchased, and by recently, I mean, seven days ago. Uh, property, uh, one zero zero five five, finding road two fifteen, so just down the road here in the lake. Uh, very excited to be joining the community here. I enjoyed hearing the conversation at last month's meeting about short term rentals. And I heard lots of people express lots of opinions and lots of really, really important questions to ask. Um, I happen to have gone through the short term rental process with Spring Lake Village. So my family has a lake cottage there. We've had for many generations. We put it on Airbnb. The village brought up the question of how to permit this. And we helped the village come up with special use permits or short term rentals. We asked ourselves many of the same questions I heard you all ask yourselves at the last meeting. We came up with some pretty good answers, I think. And we came up with a really workable solution with a special use permit. So I'm eager to hear how the conversation progresses here and. If the experience I have is useful to add to that conversation, I'm happy to participate.
Do you wanna respond to that, Ken? Cause you've got committees you're putting together.
What are they, your name and then email address? Well, how how do you spell your last name?
It's a Doozy, M S N Mary.
Yep.
E R.
Yep.
S E R E A U.
Oh.
Her name's Robert.
Okay, gotcha. Is, is that something that's publicly available, the the reg- the regulations that you came up for Spring Lake Township?
Absolutely, I said, I, it was several years ago. I think they've been updated since I was involved, but they're definitely on the Spring Lake. Spring Lake Village website. There's a village in a township and they both have different regulations, which is.
Oh, okay, so this is.
The village.
Spring Lake Village?
Spring Lake Village, yeah.
Is this the one, the mouth of the Grand River?
Yes, yes.
Okay, by um Grand Haven.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other comments before we close the meeting? Okay, meeting adjourned at eight oh eight. Thank you very much.
Um, something else you can put on the list to the.
Yes.
Um.
William is what, William's what, accessory located?
Um, things that are allowed under special use permit.
Pardon me?
There's things uh under the special use permit, which are antiquated.
Hmm.
Things like dance followers and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Which I.
You already have.
Which, you know.
In Spring Lake Village.
Well, it already has.
In what way?
No, no, I purchased it already two days ago and it'll be years before we're ready to host any of it.
It wasn't for that permitting.
And we're gonna put it there.
Narrowly.
Yep.
Uh huh.
Which is a party.
Okay, okay, gotcha. All right, I got.
So they like, yeah.
In the north side.
On the north side. Lucky.
Easier miss.
Yeah.
So just, so all you, all I will do the narrative and take my narrative. I don't care about emotions that I trust you to do that. It's the narrative as you walk through it. And this is such a simple meeting. Let me get your narrative, cause I gotta get a board from you together.
Yeah.
I'll do that in a couple of days.
And the west side.
Send it to you.
Yeah.
And do your.
I think there are.
And I have final approval now.
Yeah.
Because of.
You're not in the software.
You're supposed to be, Kara's supposed to have updated it. Not, we'll get that thing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so we bought a couple acres with a small.
Any questions to confirm?
Pretty bad prepared.
Oh, yeah.
And so we're working on uh renovating it. Up to usable status.
We turn this off?
The previous owner was midway through a renovation project when he passed.
Oh.
So we're, I'm, she's been very helpful. Next step I have to send here today to uh see if I could find.
The guy that had the permit and I think I talked to somebody. Is that you?